I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, as we move through our agenda items here, we do in fact have a quorum. We do not have anybody participating remotely. For first item, agenda additions, deletions, and amendments, I understand we have a change requested. Mr. Stav?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to move item A under new business to item A under presentations.
Second. That's been moved second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same favor. I approve. Thank you. We will quickly move along here for citizen participation. Madam City Clerk? Thank you kindly. All right, we begin this evening with, it looks like we have about a half a dozen speakers. So I'll just start the proceedings by just reminding folks, you have time allotted. There will be a, you'll hear a beeping, that's the timer going off, five minutes. You don't have to use the entire five minutes. If you can move it along faster, that's great. But we certainly welcome you for five minutes. It's not an opportunity for dialogue back and forth with the council, but it is an opportunity for you to present your ideas, thoughts, and concerns for our considerations as we proceed in any of the subjects that might be occurring this evening, or anything else that might be new and novel to your mind that you'd like to share with us. So I'll begin with Stephanie Gaines, excuse me, Stephanie Gaines Bryant. Please come on up. No, Stephanie's not here. All right, moving right along. Ah, Mr. Gary Allen, welcome back to the scene of the crime, Mr. Former Mayor. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. As you were just informed, my name is Gary Allen, and it's a pleasure to see all of you here this evening. I appear this evening in support of the expansion of the city's collection of food waste to at least half the city. The pilot program, as I understand it, has been in place for about five years. The drop-off program at, for example, Ken Hill Center has been expanded because we participate. And it's time, I think, to expand the curbside collection program. It's the next logical and, I think, long overdue step. I say long overdue because I just wanted to remind you that it was my pleasure to serve as the chairman of the EAC. I just had the pleasure of talking with the current chairman, John Teasdale, in the back of the room. But it was my pleasure to serve as their chairman for about a decade, from the time they were created until about five years ago or so. And it might be helpful, because I went back and looked at some of the recommendations we have made, because there were, at that time, when I left, over 115 of them. And it turns out, we first recommended the creation of a pilot food waste collection program in 2015, 10 years ago. I think it's time that the pilot be concluded, and that we step forward as a city and make the commitment to expand the program. We've called it many things, a study, a pilot program. It's time to call it an expanded citizen benefit for the city of Bowie. The decision, as I think, has been delayed and kicked forward long enough. However, it occurs to me that that decision has to be made in the context of perhaps another one. And that is, to advocates like myself and many others, that program requires a citizen education component. Because ultimately, the notion of how broadly participatory the program is by citizens is based upon their knowledge of the benefits of the program and how to go about it. Recycling is confusing. I've been doing it for a long time. My partner's been doing it for even longer. And frankly, she's still educating me on almost a daily basis. That education component has got to be a part of it. But frankly, the component about education did not be confined simply to those that are participating in the expanded program. It ought to be available to all citizens ultimately. As I understand it, the commitment is to expand it in the future. So start educating people now. Don't confine that to simply a small group of those who are currently participating in the program. By the way, you're not breaking trail anymore. If you'd done it in 2015, you would have broke tail. But frankly, a lot of other jurisdictions in our area have seen the light on this program and moved ahead on it, including the county in which we live. Gentlemen and ladies, it's time to make the decision. Make the commitment. I strongly support it, and I ask you to do so too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Allen. Very much appreciate it. Next on our list, Maureen Fein.
Maureen Fein, and I live in the K section of Bowie. And I have been there about 40 years. And I remember the days when I used to bring recycling to Annapolis or to the University of Maryland. And then, you know, we got recycling in Bowie, and it's, I think it's a very popular program. So also with composting, I started in my own yard, but, you know, I got tired of that. And so I started bringing my food scraps to moms when I did my grocery shopping. So now, I want to thank you so much for starting the drop-off center at the Ken Hill Center. That also is very popular, and I'm only a couple blocks away. So that's better than dragging my compost to moms with me when I do my grocery shopping. However, we, it's time to continue the progress and have curbside composting. I have a couple of friends who are in the unincorporated areas of Bowie, and they have curbside composting. And I have friends in College Park and Greenbelt and elsewhere, and they all have curbside composting. So, and I'm in the K section, so probably I won't even have curbside composting until, who knows when. Hopefully, I will be able to still wheel my, you know, my car to the curb. But anyway, I just wanted to add an exclamation point to what Mr. Allen had to say, and thank you for this effort. It's wonderful. Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming out this evening to share your thoughts. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Ken McCafee.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city staff, and citizens. My name is Ken McCoy. I'm a member of the MAPS group, the Multi-Modal Access and Public Spaces Group. We're a subcommittee of the Green Team. And I'd like to talk a little bit about the upcoming budget. MAPS would like to thank the city council, city manager, staff for continued progress with transportation in and around Bowie, making it more accessible and inclusive to multiple forms of travel. We also want to thank you for continuing to prioritize the creation and maintenance of public spaces that are inviting and inclusive to all Bowie residents. The proposed funding for trail and park projects for fiscal year '26 budget shows the city values, improving pedestrian safety, interconnectivity, and recreation opportunities within the city. We feel these projects will result in Bowie being a safer place for pedestrians, better integrated within the regional trail network, and having some of the best public spaces in the region. And specifically, we'd like to advocate for CR-51. MAPS appreciates the city's continued focus on the implementation of city trails in the master plan through proposed funding that includes the completion of the Jericho Park Trail segment and repairs and replacement to sections of the Hiker Biker Trail on North Drive. And I'd also like to give special recognition to Ridwan Croker, who's the Transportation Specialist in the Planning Department, on his very successful project, the city's very first bike map. I do a lot of biking. I have a lot of maps. This is a great map. And I also want to thank Ridwan for actually reaching out to MAPS. We had some collaboration to help make this a great product. So MAPS looks forward to doing other collaboration work with the city. We think these kinds of collaborations are good and can result in really great things. So Ridwan did a fantastic job. I urge everybody to go pick up your map. They're available at City Hall and a number of other places.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCoy. Very much appreciate your being here this evening. Next on the agenda is Joshua Woodton.
Mayor Pro Tem, esteemed members of the city council, city staff. My name is Joshua Woodton, and I chair the MAPS subgroup of the Bowie Green Team. We are here today to advocate for adding back funding for the Railroad Museum Improvement Project in fiscal year '26. We just want to highlight some of the significant cultural and educational impacts that the Railroad Museum has on our city and the importance of investing in its future. For decades, the Railroad Museum has been a valuable asset to our city, preserving and showcasing the rich history of our railroad heritage. It has served as an educational resource, offering a unique experience for students, history enthusiasts, and families. The museum is not just a place of historical artifacts, but a center of storytelling where we pass down the legacy of those who built our city and country through railroads. However, despite its importance, the museum is in need of significant upgrades. With the proper improvements, we can ensure that our museum remains a relevant and engaging institution in the years to come. These improvements will allow the museum to better tell the story of our city's pivotal role in the development of the railroad system. They'll offer a chance to inspire the next generation of engineers, historians, and community leaders. And these upgrades will likely result in increased visitation and tourism to the museum and other parts of Bowie due to the museum being on the Bowie Heritage Trail. These improvements will help foster community pride. The Railroad Museum may be viewed as a symbol of our city's resilience, innovation, and forward-thinking mindset. By investing in it now, we can ensure that it continues to be a source of pride and inspiration for years to come. MAPS respectfully asks that the city council consider adding back funds for this crucial project in fiscal year '26. Your support will not only preserve a key part of our heritage, but will help enhance our city's reputation as a vibrant and forward-thinking community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so very much for being here, Mr. Woodton. And then, let's see, next on the agenda is Mr. Bob Repczynski. There he is. I can tell the subject matter already. I'm not the, I'm not the, I'm not the brightest bulb in the chandelier, but, you know, something I can...
Yeah, how'd your trip go? Anyway, I'm Bob Repczynski, anyway, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and council. Bob Repczynski, president of Huntington Heritage Society. I'm going to keep mine a little short and sweet. Huntington Heritage Society is requesting that funding for the improvements to the railroad station continue fiscal year '26. Over the past several years, a number of improvements, part of this project have been implemented in old Bowie. Heritage Park construction of the bridge and path to the railroad buildings are a plus for old Bowie and Huntington, but we need to see this project finished. For the improvements to the railroad area have been approved for many years. It will add so much to the museum campus. Relocation of the caboose and viewing platforms and educational plaza will help make the museum a place where people, school groups, will want to visit. Bowie's history begins in Huntington City, and this project will be a showplace that will highlight the history. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciate it, as we always do, your participating here this evening. We'll have one go back. Is Stephanie Gaines Bryant here? No, still not here. All right, well, we'll take a pass then. Thank you all for being here this evening. Greatly appreciate and value your input. Next item on the agenda is presentations. Let's start with the modified agenda item. We are going to welcome Delegate Boaffo and the District 23 team for a brief legislated recap of our 2025 session. And a rowdy one it was, I think.
You can say that again, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Let me just start by saying, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, city staff, it is always good to be back at my old stomping grounds, where it all got started for me. On behalf of Delegate Holmes and Taylor and Senator Watson, who couldn't be here today, I just want to start by saying thank you for your continued collaboration, for your support when we're in Annapolis. As the Mayor Pro Tem noted, this was a tough session for us. This was not easy. It was tough on many levels. We entered session with a $3 billion deficit, which got further written down about a month in because of the Trump administration, $500 more million dollars because of the loss of federal grants and work that was happening in our states, in our state particularly. And this is a tough time for our constituents. It's a tough time for America. And it's because of that continued collaboration that we have between the city and the state that we're able to do the work that we did in Annapolis. So I'm just going to highlight a few things, because I think we did do some really good work under some tough conditions. I will talk about the budget at the end, and then yield to my two colleagues behind me. But I want to kind of go through some of the bills that I think are important. There are two that are extremely personal to me. I think they're important to the city of Bowie. There are bills that I introduced this year honoring members of our District 23 community. The first bill was called the Don't You Worry Act. It was a bill introduced in the memory of the Worries, the Worry family. If you remember, two years ago, a family traveled to Mecca, and unfortunately, they did not return. And they were our constituents here in the Bowie area. And so we put together a bill that would hold travel companies accountable for their actions. And in this particular case, what happened was that the travel company said, "We got you on visas. We got you on plane tickets. We've got you on transportation on the ground." And that never happened, and unfortunately, Haja and Alaji Worry passed. This bill did pass the House. It did not pass the Senate. You'll notice that may be a theme in everything we talk about, but that is the Senate. The next bill is the Romano-A Russell Act, that will be signed by the governor in two weeks. This bill honors the memory of Romano-A Russell, a beloved husband and father from District 23, who tragically died from cardiac arrest at the Crofton Library, where there was no AED found. It will now be state law that we have AEDs in every single library here in our state. Another bill that was personal to me, especially given the environmental community that we have here in Bowie, is the Better Buildings Act. I reintroduced that bill this year to ensure that every single new development that we build here in the state is all-electric, with a few modifications and exemptions. Because what we know in the state of Maryland, and you'll hear Delegate Holmes talk a little bit more about this, is that we have to build quick and fast, but we have to build efficiently for our environment as well. And the last bill I'll talk about that were bills that I introduced this year is the Maryland Phone-Free School Act. I think this is a bill that probably got the most interest from folks in the district. It is a bill to limit what I believe is the rising concern of social media and phones in the school system. And what the bill would do is ensure that every single school system comes up with a policy, not to get rid of phones in the school, but to limit the use during classroom times, whether that's through pouches, keeping them in lockers, whatever the case may be. Again, this bill passed the House. It did not pass the Senate. And here we are once again. You know, the one thing I heard, I think, the most, and I think my colleagues will agree with me, is about the rising cost in utility bills. Everybody felt that this year significantly. And on my committee, the Economics Matters Committee, one of the things we focus on is energy policy here in the state. And so I spent most of my session focusing on that. I led a letter with Delegate Ampry from Baltimore City to essentially ask the PSC, the Public Service Commission, to put a moratorium for the rest of the year on rate hikes for BG and Pepco regions. They did not do that, unfortunately. But here are the three things that we did do. We passed the Next Generation Act, which provides $200 million in directly relief for energy prices for families. Constituents in our district are going to feel that immediately, and they'll see that as part of their utility credit. We established the Renewable Energy Certainty Program, which permits, which actually allows permanent delays and inconsistent regulations slowing down solar projects to no longer exist. And essentially, that's so important, especially in the rural parts of our state, where there are folks saying, "We don't want solar farms on our communities." And we're saying that actually, we're going to usurp local control. I know you guys do not like to hear that. But we're going to usurp local control when it comes to making sure that we have clean energy going back to the grid. And the last thing that we did is the Energy Resource Adequacy and Planning Act is creating a new strategic planning office to really look at the long-term energy reliability and risk planning here in the state of Maryland. The last thing I'll talk about when it comes to energy is we focused a lot on nuclear planning. You know, in Southern Maryland, we have Calvert Cliffs. They want a second nuclear reactor. But the interesting thing about this market that we're in is that there are these new small reactors that can be online. And by quickly, I mean in the next five years, 10 years. And so the state is really looking to invest in that and monetize that in a real way to make sure that we have more clean energy on the grid. I'll talk about one more thing, and then I'll go into the budget and, again, yield to my colleagues. But we made an investment in our children a long time ago in Maryland. Delegate Holmes was there to really vote on the bill. We just get to take credit for it. But the Blueprint for Our Future Act, which was a significant, once-in-a-generation investment in education here in the state. And what happened in session was there were a lot of debates about how do we reduce the blueprint? The reality is, every parent who can hear my voice should know that the House of Delegates, led by Maryland House Democrats, pushed to ensure that the blueprint would be funded for the next two years, and that we can continue our investment in children. We also passed the Excellent in Maryland Public Schools Act, which expands funding sources for Blueprint Future, including one-time investment in the Academic Excellence Fund, which really establishes new programs for academic needs, supports teacher recruitment, and improves implementation of community schools initiatives, which is so, so critical to Prince George County. I talked a little earlier about the $3.3 billion deficit. Here's where we are now. We have a $5 million strategic surplus. I mean, think about what that means. We enter session, $3 billion in deficit, got to $3.5 billion because of the Trump administration. We're leaving a session with a $5 million surplus. And we still were able to bring money back to the district. And that's so significant, because those are the projects that our constituents really feel day in and day out. I will say, before I get into all the good things that we, I assume that we will be heading back to session sometime in the fall, once the Congress gets its act together and passes a budget, so that we can know exactly where the cuts lie for the state of Maryland and for our constituents. But let me tell you, this team behind you, and including Senator Watson, brought back approximately $9 million to the district, a significant chunk for the city of Bowie, for the Race Course Training Property Center, for capital upgrades and renovation. That was about $6.2 million. We did $2.23 million for, we moved that up for Bowie State for their new library, which is so desperately needed. If you haven't been to Bowie State to see what their current library looks like and what this new library is going to look like, you understand why that investment was so significant. We did $200,000 for an AI-enabled purvis, a security system at Bowie State. I think we all know the tragedy that happened last year, two years ago, actually, at their homecoming. We want to make sure that Bowie State continues to be a safe place for kids to learn and grow. We did $100,000 for renovations of security camera upgrades at Bowie High. It is no secret that not just Bowie High, but other high schools across the state have been going through some security challenges because of the aging facilities. And we got them $100,000 to do that. And then we did some fun stuff. We did $21,000 for a digital sign of Samuel Ogul. We did $10,000 for Prince George's County Youth Power Man Program. And we did $20,000 for a new marquee at the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts. Again, I want to thank you guys personally for the dedication and the work we're doing. The work is far from over, frankly, and we find ourselves in some difficult times. But it's going to be the continued partnership with the city of Bowie, with city staff, who, again, as I know, because I used to sit in one of these seats, is so invaluable to every single one of you guys, but also to us as we map out what the city of Bowie needs moving forward. I've said this when I was sitting on that side of the desk. I'll say it now. It says standing here, "The city of Bowie is so important to the state of Maryland." You don't realize how many people in the General Assembly and in the state look to the city of Bowie as an example of a well-run city, a fiscally responsible city, but more importantly, a city where people can really kind of live, thrive, work, and play. And so I want to thank you guys again for all your work. And with that, I will yield to my friend, Delegate Kim Taylor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was theater-trained, so it's tough for me to have my back to you guys. So I have to say, excuse my back. I was trained to say that. Like Delegate Boaffo said, this was a challenging session. It's our third, but I have to say, it was the most busy and the most challenging. I actually sponsored 12 bills this year. Seven passed out of the House of Delegates, and five made it to the governor. So we know what happened to the others, right? They didn't make it out the Senate, but that's okay. We'll bring them back. Some that are relevant to us here in Bowie is Youth Services bureaus. You all know how important the Youth Services Bureau in Bowie has been to our families and our children. And I had one bill that since, and, you know, recently, the funding has declined for our youth services bureaus around the state. And instead of asking for money this year, which we did, you know, to no avail in years prior, what we did was we asked the DJS, Department of Juvenile Services, to do a report that would show the efficiency and the effectiveness and the cost-effectiveness, quite frankly, of our youth services bureaus around the state. So hopefully, that will be something that our state will start to recognize and start funding, fully funding again. Lynn Lucci, which a lot of you know, Lynn brought to us the Ordinance Violations Bill, which allows our municipalities to increase fines up to $5,000 to this point. Our fines for those that are repeat offenders or who are more drastic offenders who violate our ordinances, you know, they pay $1,000. Well, for the last 30 years, that cap has been at $1,000. It is now $5,000, and that did pass. Five of the bills that I sponsored with Delegate Holmes, actually, were recommendations from the Property Appraisal and Valuation Equity Task Force. As most of you know, that I and Delegate Holmes were both founders of the Fair and Unbiased Appraisal Advocates. Well, the task force finished its work in October, and they had several recommendations that eliminated barriers to become an appraiser, increased the pipeline for appraiser licensure, and raises homeowners' chances at a fair property valuation. Now, these issues, only one of those passed, but we'll bring them back next year. But this issue is especially important in Bowie as our population ages and the need becomes greater for equity in our homes so we can use that money for our long-term care. And I'm one of those. Also, as you know, I serve on the Judiciary Committee. This year, we've had some major wins in terms of justice, like parole reform, the Second Look Act, reparations commission, and organized retail theft. All of these are very important pieces of legislation, and I'm very proud to be supportive of each one of those. And last, I want to mention Eric's ID Law, which I co-sponsored with Delegate Janelle Wilkins, who serves as the Chair of our Black Caucus and Vice Chair of our Ways and Means Committee. And that bill allows those with non-apparent disabilities to have a symbol on their state-issued license. So for any interaction with law enforcement or first responder, that law enforcement officer or first responder would be trained to know exactly how to respond to what they might encounter with this person who has this disability. Or they may get no response at all, but be able to recognize that. but be able to recognize that as for what it is and be able to respond in a, in an effective way. And it also gives moms like me, who has, I have a child, he's not a child anymore, he's 26, but he's on the spectrum. And he does have the issue, a state-issued ID. And he's had several encounters with the, with the police thus far. So it gives us a little relaxation, a little reduced anxiety when knowing our sons and daughters, when they're out there alone, that the police will respond in kind or in a kind manner. And then finally, as I'm not going to take up much of your, your time, I just want to say, you know, you guys are always on our mind when we're in session. Bowie, Bowie State University, and the rest of the district are always at the top of our minds. And you can be assured that we're working hard for you guys. So thanks for the opportunity.
Well, good evening to you all. It's good to see you all again. I have been now in the General Assembly for 22 sessions. And I want to unequivocally announce to you that this was the most challenging of the 22, primarily because of the monies or lack thereof. And in addition to that, funding that we were promised from Washington DC that was either taken away after the promise or it just never came. It made it very difficult for us to plan in advance. Just to give you an idea of the process, in the Senate, there were introduced 1,047 bills. In the House, there were introduced 1,558, totaling 2,605 bills that were introduced, both the House and the Senate. That number, 2,605, is pretty normal. That goes into the top of the funnel. Coming out in terms of actual law this year was 236. So about 9% of the bills that were introduced actually became law. I just wanted to make sure you understood how this whole funneling process works within the General Assembly. And that's pretty consistent. I had a piece of legislation in that I brought forth because of your request, the zoning bill. And I thought that we had a good opportunity to bring that forward. However, once the discussions took place within the General Assembly, within the Prince George County delegation specifically, that bill did not get out. One of the, one of the things that I did notice about that bill, however, is that Bowie was in the lead because, again, everyone understands how Bowie works, how Bowie functions. And that's a credit to you guys. Once the bill was introduced, many other jurisdictions wanted to be a part of it because of your leadership, the city of Bowie. I don't know if we're going to bring it, bring it back in next year. It depends upon the administration, obviously, in the Prince George County government. Well, we'll see what takes place. I am on many different committees in the General Assembly. I'm on land use and ethics. I'm Vice Chair of Rules and Executive Nominations. I'm on a few other ones as well. My primary focus in the General Assembly is that I am Chair of Housing and Real Property. Being Chair of Housing and Real Property simply means that everything related to items like real estate, real estate appraisal, licensures, and HOAs, condos, and co-ops come through the subcommittee that I am Chair of. Of all the bills that came through all of the committees on the House side, most bills came through the Environment and Transportation Committee, of which housing and real property is part of. The subcommittee that had hit the most bills in that committee was housing and real property. So I was pretty busy. I didn't have a lot of opportunity to discuss a whole lot of other things because I was singular in focus, drinking water from a fire hose for 90 days. You can't taste water when you come at that fast either. Just to give you an idea of some of the bills that came through, the Subcommittee, and not necessarily bills that I was the elite sponsor on, but there was a bill that came through, which I think is going to be very relevant to all of us, allowing childcare in, in HOAs. Persons can have a childcare center based upon specific requirements because of the lack of childcare in, in some of the areas in our state. We also had a bill that was talking about the, the collection process in HOAs, et cetera. And we are trying to get some of those things taken care of in a more coherent process. We also had a wrongful detainer bill. I and Senator Watson were the sponsors of this bill. Some of you may know, I also do property management. And one of the, one time I went to a property, a single-family home that I was the manager of to check upon the construction and renovation of that house. I walked into the door, and I could see in the background a family eating dinner at the table. And coming towards me at a rapid pace was a rottweiler. I obviously left. And so this bill that Delegate Watson and I sponsored is reference to a, is relevant to squatters, et cetera, squatters in the building taking place. We are also going to have another bill next year because there is, are becoming more rampant across the United States where persons are using AI to create leases. And persons are thinking that they are acquiring real leases, and they are not. Also, part of the problem that's taking place across the United States is persons think that they are purchasing a home as well. Another problem that's taking place across the United States are persons are being removed from their homes because someone has put a lien on their homes and has sold that lien to other persons unbeknownst to the person who lives in the house. We're going to take that next year as well. I'm going to close with this. One of the primary concerns that I have in the state of Maryland in terms of HOAs, condos, and co-ops, if you live in a common ownership community in the state of Maryland, there is no state agency in charge of that, none. No state agency is available for you to pick up the phone and ask a question, is this legal or is it not? There's no state agency that's in charge to say, can someone help me? Unless you file a lawsuit with the Attorney General's Office, and they are so backed up, it's difficult to do. So because there is no state agency to call, persons call my office because they recognize that I'm Chair of Housing and Real Property. And my Chief of Staff is here, MJ Sutton. And we get calls from all across the state. I don't mind getting all of those calls from across the state and addressing those questions. The problem, however, that it is not fair to the citizens of the state of Maryland that there's no place to go with your question. Because of that, we're going to be forming an organization, a statewide organization. We're going to be forming a nonprofit statewide organization where everyone from across the state can come together and voice their concerns. And if that happens, we can then begin to combat one of the things that my two colleagues were talking about in that bills get passed in the House and they go over to the Senate and dissipate. It's difficult to prove, for example, that someone else cares about things in HOAs if the only person standing in front of the Senate is Marvin Holmes. They assume that the vacancy behind me in discussing this is because no one else cares. The problem is that persons don't really understand how to get there and let their voice be heard. We're going to be forming, like I said, a statewide organization so that persons can get together and form their opinions. The other problem that we have is community managers. There are great community managers out here in the state. Some are really wonderful. However, in the state of Maryland, persons who are responsible for millions of dollars for HOAs, condos, and co-ops, in order to be a community manager in the state of Maryland, you need one thing, a business card that says you're a community manager. That's it. We're going to take care of that, too. Ladies and gentlemen, a pleasure. And we'll, we'll be taking care of this in the future. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Holmes. Mr. Mayor Protem, if you guys have any questions, we are here to answer that. I'll just say, the District 23 team is always working for you. And I'll give a shout, a shout out to what, what our colleagues are doing, not just in Annapolis, but for the state. Senator Watson is the Vice Chair of the Prince George's County delegation in the Senate. Delegate Holmes is the Vice Chair of Rules and Executive Nominations and the Chair of the Housing and Real Properties Subcommittee, which, as you know, is so important. And I will tell you this, there's nobody else defending more bills on the floor than Marvin E. Holmes. And frankly, I know that because I'm sitting right next to him when he defends all those bills. Delegate Taylor serves as the Vice Chair of the Education Subcommittee for the Prince George's County House delegation and also is a senior board member for the Women's Caucus. And I get to serve as Assistant Majority Leader in the House and Chair of the Education Committee. In fact, the Education Committee for our county is comprised of the three of us and one other member. We are the Education Committee. So, Mr. Mayor Protem, if there are any questions, we'll, we'll take them. If not, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. First of all, I want to extend my personal appreciation and that of the entire community for the good works that, that you guys are engaged with. It is a delight to see the three of you. And Senator, I know he's not able to be here this evening, but to see you guys working so well together, collaborating on, on efforts. And it's a great collegial environment that tends to produce far better results than, than bickering and, and arguing and so forth. So it's, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful thing to see and very much appreciated by, by all of our constituents. So I'll turn to my colleagues now and see if anybody has any questions. I'll start to the right. Comments? Mr. Stev?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I just want to take a moment and thank the delegation for coming out here tonight and also for your incredible work in Annapolis. I know that we don't always talk as much as we'd like when you guys are drinking out of those fire hoses. But when we do talk, it's always incredibly productive. And you, as a team, consistently deliver. And you're constantly asking us what we need, which is incredibly nice. We know that not all state lawmakers are that close with their municipalities and their local governments. So we count our lucky stars that we have this team in Annapolis representing us. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stev. Councilman Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So I want to thank you all as well. I just have to be fully transparent. These three folks really helped me understand politics. And I use them as my models, mentors, and my examples. So I thank you all very much. I have a quick question. And you talked, you touched on it, but you didn't talk about it. Senator Ron Watson's bill regarding transparency of development impact fees was signed into law. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I'm going to try to take a stab at it. So essentially, what his bill does is, as you know, when, and I think you guys have some developers here. But when you, you know, when we develop in Bowie, there is an impact fee that then gets spread across the county. What the senator wants to essentially prove is that most of that money really should be coming to the city of Bowie, but it goes throughout the county to different jurisdictions. And there's a very philosophical question to that. Should Bowie development money should be used to help impoverish places in our county? Or should they be helping here in Bowie? Or at least should there be parity in, in those fees? And so that's, that's really what that bill does. And it's critically important. But I'll yield to the guy who probably has the bill.
And if I, I'm sure you all understand that before a single building permit is issued, there's the adequate public facilities fee, and then there's the school fee. Those two fees add up to about $30,000 per house. And that's before the permit is even issued. We feel that a bulk of that $30,000 should stay in the area where that construction is being placed. And that's what that bill was all about.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I do, and I will comment. And this, I think, is something that's of, of great concern everywhere because there is development that comes into play. And our developers are, you know, getting beat about the head and shoulders saying, hey, you came in, you built all these houses. What have you done for my school? And in turn, they're saying, we did our part. We gave the money over. And nobody knows where it went. And it's not just a, a problem local to Bowie. It's endemic throughout the region, indeed, I suspect, throughout the state. So good, good work there. So go down here to, to the end, Mr. Truesdale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I just want to echo my colleagues. Thank you so much for the legislative recap. I know how important it is to have that collaboration with the state. And you guys are working, you know, diligently and, and hard. And just to let you guys know that the city of Bowie is always thinking of you guys, too. And you are always on our mind. All right. Thank you much.
All right. Thank you very much. And Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. When you go last, it's easy because you can say ditto, 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 ditto. So I won't repeat everything they, they said. But I do have, on that last topic that we talked about, that has been an issue probably 20, 25 years. It's always been a, I know when I was in the council in 2005, 2008, and what have you, as development was going on, we kept saying, spend more in Bowie, spend more in Bowie. And the response was always, well, if we put it throughout the whole system, Bowie improves. Well, no, they need to look at it, if not all of it. Maybe come up with a formula that half of it stays locally in whatever jurisdiction, and the other half goes to the system. So I wish you well in that. I know it's been a hard fight, and we haven't, we've inched, but we haven't gotten very far. And then the last thing, I'd just like to extend an early birthday greeting to Adrian. He'll be 31 on Saturday, so I want to wish him well.
Thanks for telling everyone my age, but I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, guys, seriously. And again, we're here to be partners. The work is far from done, and we have three more years of this. So let's get this done. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much for being here this evening. Thank you. All righty. Next item on our presentation this evening is Heritage Month. This is Diversity Committee Presentation on Asian Pacific Islander, Desi American Heritage Month. There we go. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the, of the Sagu City Council. My name is Kevin Lopez Cruz, and I'm honored to speak tonight on behalf of the city of Bowie's Diversity Committee as we celebrate Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander AANHPI Heritage Month. This annual observance held each May honors the legacies, cultures, contributions of the AANHPI community to our nation's story, including right here in Bowie, where they represent approximately 3% of our population. This celebration dates back to 1977, when Representatives Frank Horton and Norman Mineta proposed a week to recognize Asian Pacific American contributions. By 1992, it had become a month-long celebration thanks to advocacy led by leaders like Mineta, who endured internment during World War, World War II, and later served as the first Asian-American Cabinet Member under two presidents. Their stories remind us of resilience, progress, and the importance of visibility. Today, AANHPI leaders are continuing to shape Maryland and our broader society. Lieutenant Governor Aruna Miller, born in India, became the first woman of color and immigrant elected statewide in Maryland. Delegate Dr. Harry Bandari, the first Nepali-American elected to serve in any US state legislature, advocates for the, for education and healthcare. Delegate David Moon of Korean descent is Majority Leader in the Maryland State House and a champion of justice reform. Artists like Miki Talepi preserve and elevate Pacific Island heritage, while leaders like Amy Jong Chung Frye build civic engagement right here in our Prince George's County. We also recognize national trailblazers, Senator Tammy Duckworth, a war hero and advocate for veterans; figure skater Michelle Kwan, who combined grace and excellence on ice; golfer Tiger Woods, who broke barriers in sports; and entertainment icons like Bruno Mars and YouTube co-founder Steve Chen, who revolutionized music and digital media. Innovators like Eric Yuan of Zoom reminded us, especially during the pandemic, how technology can keep us connected when we need it the most. This month, Prince George's County Memorial Library System offers resources and events to explore AANHPI cultures, including a K-pop dance workshop, a traditional Japanese coda recital, and a dynamic Indian classical dance and hip-hop and a dynamic Indian classical dance and hip-hop fusion class. They also recommended books for all ages to learn more about these diverse communities. We encourage our residents to celebrate by participating in these events and exploring the resources offered by organizations such as the Asian American Health Initiative, the Smithsonian Asian Pacific American Center, and more. As Charles Yo-Yo Ma once said, "When you learn something from people or from a culture, you accept it as a gift." The AANHPI community's stories are gifts that enrich our shared heritage. Whether through science, politics, music, or everyday acts of leadership, their contributions are woven into the fabric of our city and of our country. On behalf of the Diversity Committee, thank you for honoring and celebrating AANHPI Heritage Month. Let us continue to uplift these voices, not just in May, but every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. All right. Next item on our agenda are city boards and committees. Bear with me a moment as I look for my appropriate. Here we go. We have a couple of appointments and swearing ins this evening. We have Mr. Alan Olaron Sola, who was interviewed on April 21st for appointment to the Community Recreation Committee. Council concurred to appoint him to the committee as a regular member for a two-year term. Mr. Truesdale, do you care to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor Protam, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Alan Olaron Sola to the Community Recreation Committee.
Second.
The motion's been made and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Second item here is Mr. Isaiah Battle, who was interviewed on April 21st for appointment to the Administrative Review Board. Council concurred to appoint him to the board as a regular member for a two-year term. Is there a motion to appoint?
Mr. Mayor Protam, I'd like to move to appoint Mr. Battle. First, your turn.
Second.
Thank you. The motion's been made and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Well, I think we have both here today. If you would please come up, Mr. Olaron Sola and Mr. Battle. Very good. And if my colleagues would join me. Come on up here. Actually, to tell you what, why don't you both stand over there at the microphone so you can be heard? We'll do it that way. My apologies. And then we'll get things going. We'll start things off. I'll give you a quick update, or excuse me, instruction. I'll lead you in the oath. I'll ask you to repeat your names. You can choose to either swear or affirm. And then when the time comes, you just have to indicate which committee member, excuse me, which committee for which you will be a member. All right? So, here we go. There's your hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Alan Olaron Shala.
Do swear or affirm?
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance
And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
The state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
That I, to the best of my skills and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of member of.
Execute the office of member of Community Recreation Committee.
Very good. All right. According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right. All right. That's right. This is a check. This is Alan. There we go. Thank you very much. Congratulations. And then this is for you, Isaiah.
Congratulations. Thank you so very much.
Congratulations. All right, come back down here.
I do want to take a quick moment to thank both of you gentlemen for volunteering to participate in our committees. And I will extend the offer out to the rest of the community. This city benefits from the participation of residents in a wide variety of committees. It's an opportunity to be engaged with the community. It's an opportunity to give back and to share your expertise, your enthusiasm for a myriad of subjects. So, if you have an interest, you're a resident here, please do come forward. Take a look at our website. We do have some openings available. And we'd love to see you here because, at the end of the day, these committees help this body do its work. And it helps to have another voice from our constituents to help us make the right decisions. So, thank you again for being here this evening. And thank you for volunteering for the rest of your lives to work at exactly $0 for an unknown number of hours. So, thank you very much. All right. Next on our agenda. Council announcements. Do we have announcements this evening? Anybody have any comments, announcements, anything here? Councilman Truesdale?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Just want to send a shout out to all the wonderful and beautiful people in the city of Bowie, mainly District 3, of course. I just want to highlight that on last week, we did a walkthrough. I was able to do a walkthrough along with others at the Maryland Women Business Center. They are supplying 12 cohort startup businesses, which is to open Friday in the Bowie Town Center right beside Recognition Art Gallery. So, we're kind of looking forward to seeing a lot of success through there. Also, United Furniture Grand Opening was on Saturday. Had a chance to participate there. And lastly, just an opportunity to be a part of the Emerging Leadership of Maryland New Class. And so, we had our first reception on this evening. And so, that's why I thought I was going to be running a little bit late, called the city clerk. But for the most part, them are the announcements. And you guys have a great night. And thanks for hanging out with us, all you guys.
Thank you, Councilman Truesdale. Any other comments, questions? I do have one announcement to make. I want to remind everybody that this coming Sunday is Mother's Day. So, you all should remember your mothers. And as I present this as a concern, I also have a resolution as to what you're going to get Mother for Mother's Day. And that is on Saturday, May 10th, the day before Mother's Day, because everyone's a last-minute chopper. Come on by the Bel Air Mansion. We have the plant sale that's being sponsored by the Bowie Garden Club as well as the city. It's a wonderful event on the back lawn of Bel Air Mansion. There will be a number of tents set up. There will be a whole host of plants and flowers available for sale. A good time will be had by all. Please come along. Bring mom along. And you'll all have a good time, I promise. So, thank you for that. Let's see. Next item here, city manager's report. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, sir. I have no report tonight. Thank you.
I see. So, the idea is if it's this late in the game, the report gets shorter. Much appreciated, Mr. Manager. All right. We have a consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll move on to old business. The first item under old business is fiscal year 2026 budget and CIP. Staff is here to discuss fiscal year 26 budget and CIP. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn that over to you and your exceptional team.
Well, Mr. Mayor Protam, thank you very much. The reason why we put this on the agenda this year is because in the past, and in accordance with state law, we had to establish the milage rate, even though whether we had proposed an increase or not. You all would have to vote on the current milage rate or lower it to adjust to the constant yield. Well, state law changed. So, we are not required to present the constant yield situation anymore. And the only reason why we would put this on the agenda for formal hearing and action would be if we proposed a milage rate increase. The fact is that we do not. We did not this year. So, therefore, we didn't have to do it. But in the interest of transparency, I just want to explain to you and the people why this isn't a hearing, why we're not establishing, measuring the constant yield and establishing a rate. That would only be the case is if I were proposing, from my budget, an increase. And you would be voting on that on the 19th. Now, that's why that is. You all have all been involved in the budget process. We are one work session away from completing that. And of course, having you all vote on the budget on the 19th. But I've got the finance director here. He's ready to answer any questions that you all might have about the budget work session process so far. If you want, or we can wait till the next session, which is next week, to sort that out. It's up to you, though.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'll look to my colleagues this evening, see if we have any questions or thoughts. Anything down there? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. I actually do have one quick question. How many years now, same tax rate?
Thank you for the question. Good evening. Byron Matthews, Finance Director. It's been about 15 years, Councilman, that the city has not raised the tax rate. I also wanted to take this opportunity as the follow-up of city manager's point on the constant yield. He is correct. We wanted to share with you just the tentative changes to the budget thus far during the process. The changes that we have made have made an increase in the budget on the general fund side of $525,500. They relate to transfers to the general fund. We increased our recruiting and in-service expenditures as well as our professional services for our shredding and electronic recycling events. We reduced the economic developments, full-time positions to a part-time position. That was the total effect of the general fund. We also increased the Capital Projects Fund by $240,000. That was an increase in the transfer for Alan Pon for additional work that was being done. Those monies will be coming from the general fund as well as a decrease to the Bel Air Mansion for work that will not be performed. And the use of the appropriated fund balance was reduced by $177,700. That's all I have, Councilman. And Mayor Protam?
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciate it. It is a commendable record on the tax rate, one of which could not be achieved without the good work of your offices. So, thank you very much for that effort. Any other follow-up questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll close that out. And we'll move along now to item B, which is adoption of Resolution R 20-25, awarding a contract for construction services for the new ICE Arena project. And this is eligible for action. I'll turn this over to staff for presentation and discussion. And then we will also open up for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the new ICE Arena, we had an invitation for bid, which was issued via bid locker to these three pre-qualified firms: Henry H. Lewis Contractors, J.A. Schiebel Incorporated, Warner Construction LLC. That was opened on March 3rd. The bid opening was on April 29th at 11 o'clock. You all were provided copies of the bids that came in. The lowest bid was $21,839,787. It is staff's recommendation to move forward.
All right. We'll start with any questions anyone might have for staff at the moment, so far. And then we'll open up for public comment. Do we have any, anybody signed up to speak?
There's no public hearing for this item.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So, I want to step back then, if I may. On the three awards, I noted in the materials that we had a broader pool of candidates for potential award. And we whittled it down to three. The award, one thing that's really jumped out at me was that it was significantly less than what we originally anticipated. I think we're about 8.2 million or so below what our initial estimate was. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. I could talk about both elements. Back in January, January of this year, the city of Bowie issued a request for statement of qualifications. So, we basically put out a request to contractors to submit their qualifications to us. We had nine vendors. I won't go through the full list of all nine that submitted. We had a pretty detailed group team that reviewed it, including our Public Works Director, who's the only engineer that we have on staff here with the city; our chief contracting officer, myself; our deputy director for community services, project manager; we also had our construction management administrator, who is a third-party vendor that works for us on this project; and Carrie Robertson, who's the ICE Arena manager, likely the most important person in this project. So, anyway, we went through a very detailed process of reviewing the qualifications. We whittled it down to three that were of outstanding quality vendors that had a history of this kind of detailed mechanical work that is required with ICE Arenas. All three were extremely responsive through the bid process. There's a lengthy question-answer period, looking at engineered documents. All three were fantastic, to be quite honest, through that whole process. At the end of the day, as I mentioned before, Warner did come in at just below $22 million. We have a budget of $30 million, just above $30 million on this project. We were very pleased with the bids that came in. All three bids came in significantly under budget. We also had our vendor, Mr. Gardner, Tim Gardner, from Construction Management, the owner's representative. That's the name of the company, the owner's representative. He did an evaluation of our three past cost estimates for single-sheet ICE. And we overperformed with all three, based on those estimates. So, it's very good news.
Excellent. Well, I do want to say thank you to the entire team. I know with having been involved in, in large contracts in the past and in my alternative life, it's, it's time-consuming and it takes a lot of attention to detail. The, the vendor that we have selected here, recommended, their portfolio include ice arenas in the past?
So they have a project manager. In this area, we're not loaded with ice arenas.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the challenges we have. So Warner Construction has a significant background in refrigeration, mechanical-type systems, pharmaceuticals, that type of stuff. Their lead project manager was involved with Able Academy's ice arena construction, the newer one, many years ago. We hope to keep him, you know, in this ever-evolving, you know, climate of people coming and going. That's going to be a challenge for us. That being said, all three had backgrounds in mechanical, complex mechanical systems, recreation sites. So they all were, were hitting the, the target of companies that could absolutely deliver a fine product for us.
Excellent. Thank you. Turn to my colleagues for thoughts and questions. Councilman Steff?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Protem. Mr. Spurgeon, thank you so much. I know we have some folks in the crowd tonight who've been observing this project in its various iterations now for quite some time. Just want to go over some details for the public's recollection, since this has been a very long journey. Originally, we looked, well, first, we started looking at replacing the city of Bowie ice arena because the existing one is well beyond its last lag. It's been now closed for extended periods of time over the summer, and it's had a number of emergency delay repairs. It all costs exorbitant amounts of money, and it's also operating at far, far away from peak efficiency, which requires subsidy from, from taxpayers that, that a newer arena wouldn't necessarily need. Am I correct in all that so far?
You are correct.
Okay. We looked initially at doing a two-sheet ice arena replacement. That project ultimately stalled several years ago, and then we went back to the drilling board, and are now looking at doing a one-for-one replacement. So we're taking an existing ice arena that has to be ultimately closed, and we're replacing it with an identical arena whose main advantage is that it's being built from the ground up in a fresh location with modern refrigeration technology, modern design principles, so it's going to be more efficient, have better internal tech. And it was designed closely with both our ice arena personnel involved and with the user community involved in the design to make sure that we were checking every conceivable box possible. Is that basically correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we're looking at a one-for-one replacement. We looked at a whole bunch of locations. Ultimately, we decided to go with a property adjacent to the existing city of Bowie Golf Course on 197. And the reason for that decision ultimately is because it was already city-owned property, so we wouldn't have to buy any new property. There's already some wooded areas separating it off from the rest of the, of the community. It's across the street from Rockledge Elementary. We looked at traffic patterns at Northview Elementary where the existing ice arena is located and saw that it wasn't generating a ton of traffic, no more than a couple dozen kids on the ice at a time. And the ice arena tends to be busiest when the golf course is least busy, so there wouldn't be a significant spike in traffic on 197, based on the use. My tracking so far?
Yes, you are. One, one comment.
Yes, sir.
The lot is predominantly, there are no trees predominantly on the lot, so we're not cutting down a whole bunch of trees. You are correct, there are some trees along the border, which, which provides some cushion to the neighboring property.
I should have clarified, that's what I meant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's trees that are bordering the property, we're not taking anything out.
Yeah, we're not taking trees.
There's a visual separation from people around it.
You got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then finally, oh, and then, of course, the, the golf course property owners have been on board with this for a long time because they're very excited about the prospect of parents dropping their kids off to play skating and then hanging out in, in the new course with the new clubhouse that we're going to also be spending some money to renovate.
Yeah, there's some great cross-collaboration, cross-pollination that, that is planned, and the golf course team, management team, has been part of this, this entire design process.
Wonderful. So the, the neighbors, the golf course managers have been involved in this process from, from the early stages as well. Great.
Correct.
Last point. We originally thought this was going to come in at some $30.5 million, and it looks like the bid that we're poised to accept is $21 million, so we haven't even started yet, and we're already operating at 30% less than what we expected to. So that's, that's a pretty good start for a project whose, whose history has been long and complicated and has had many false starts. All I'll say is I really appreciate the patience of the many folks who've been calling Ice Arena home for a long time. It's a treasured amenity in our community. We are, we have no shortage of recreational facilities, public, private, nonprofit, and otherwise in this area, but this, this is a unique amenity that Bowie's had for a long time. We've had some all-star skaters start here in Bowie from a whole bunch of different backgrounds. We've had a lot of love go into the arena, and frankly, if it weren't for the incredible dedication of the personnel that we have, I don't think that our existing arena would have lasted nearly as long. Every time we have a professional or consultant from the outside take a look at our arena, see the full extent of everything that it's dealing with because of its age, and see that it's still basically running all right and that there aren't nearly as many challenges there could be, we constantly get really positive kudos from outside experts who tell us, you know, it's just incredible that we've managed to keep it going this long. So a big thank you to the personnel and the staff who make that happen. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Steff. Councilwoman Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you for the presentation and the report. I agree with my colleague, this was a long-time process. I know it started prior to 2019, probably much earlier, and I'm quite sure Councilman Brady can attest to that. But one thing that we have to keep in mind, this is a replacement, a one-for-one. I say that because as, as I was campaigning for this seat, one of the biggest issues was around the ice skating rink. Either side of the argument was given, but what, what I wanted to just kind of reemphasize is that this is a one-for-one. That does not mean that in the, you know, the city cannot look at other recreational activities that others, that are in this diverse community are interested in. It does not limit that or keep that from happening. We're just replacing something that's old. I will just reemphasize, there was a lot of people concerned about traffic on 197 because it is not easy getting in and out, but we are also addressing that for that constituency as well. So, and plus, not taking any trees away even makes it better. So with that being said, Mr. Mayor Protem, those are my comments.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Rogers. Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, I am the only one up here that can attest to the start of this project. It started in April of 14, and the expectation at that time was to replace the existing one with a two-sheet ice, and if my memory serves me right, it was either 17 or 18, maybe $19 million 11 years ago, to do both. And at the time, there was a, an expectation that it would be followed up because at the time, there was, people were clamoring for more gym space. So the plan was to build the replacement ice rink, have it open roughly 2017, and then start looking at the needs for the gymnasium. Unfortunately, it's been a rough path, path since then. So, and I will share with my colleagues what I told when I was on the council before and when this was an issue. In my conversations with the Bowie Hockey Club and, and other ice users, my position now is pretty much what it was then. This is a replacement of an existing facility, and I told them back then that I would be hard-pressed to support an ice rink if it was a new amenity. It is an existing amenity. It's been, what, over 50 years in the city? It is part of what makes Bowie special, one of many things that makes Bowie special. And, and we need to move forward and bring this project to a proper conclusion, so I'm very supportive of that. I do have a couple of questions real quick. The $21,839,787, the fixed-price contract, correct?
Correct.
So that there won't be any, well, I won't say what cost over. But for that money, we get a facility, correct?
So that price is, is the, the fixed price, as you mentioned. Certainly, there could be site conditions that we're, you know, not even thinking of. We've done bore testing, we've done, you know, we've done a lot of site analysis to reduce those chances. You know, it is clearly in our interest not to have a whole lot of change orders on this project.
Right. And, and we've had good, good records with that. Matter of fact, when I was on the council, we built the city hall here. It was designed, and the expectation when the bids went out was a $25 million space. And we just happened to do it when the economy tanked in late 2008 timeframe, and the bid came in at 19 million. We saved 36% of the cost just because we were positioned to do it at the time. And construction firms were hungry for work, so they, they really sharpened their pencils. So, I mean, what is staff's thoughts on what will happen with the old ice arena? Will we have to tear it down right away, or is there a period of time that it can be
Well, I mean, the plan is to shut down the old ice rink when the, when the new one comes into service.
Exactly.
And the, the general concept that came from the council, with this thought being in mind, would be invariably to put an indoor court there. That was the, that was the concept. There's been no policy decision on that, but that's how the indoor court
Right.
got on the CIP, which is no action to be taken there until 2028.
I understand. So, so there is an opportunity, at least for a while, to utilize the old facility, not as an ice arena, but use it for, like you said, indoor courts and the like?
Well, that's possible, if, if, if it's feasible, if the actual facility could support that, and it's not, you know, about to crumble or something like that.
As, as long as we're not talking about bucking Mother Nature and having the building fall down, that would give us a window, if you will, after the new ice arena goes into service and, and operating, to have the possibility of added indoor facility courts and pickleball courts and the like, until we can come up with a more long-term solution and then look at raising the existing ice rink. So I'm just looking at a stopgap in between. There's a possibility there. And then the last comment I will say, and I think Councilman Steve, I think, was, mentioned the traffic issue. I do have a concern with that, and I fully expect this, my expectation personal, that when the ice arena goes online and starts working, I expect the traffic light at, at Rockledge and the entrance to the, the golf course set up similar to what we have with Marquette and, is it Idowild?
Yes.
Where it's an offset intersection and it's, and it's timed as one. So that is my expectation, that when we get to that point, it will be signalized. Thank you, man.
Thank you, Councilman Brady. Councilman Trusdale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I just want to say, I don't have as much history as my colleague here, Brady, does with, with the, with the council and the history and everything, but for the most part, there has been a lot of concern. My, my wife and I, we had a chance to go to Alberta, Canada, earlier this year, and while being there, we were at Banff National Park and had a chance to skate at Lake Louise. Just, just for the record, I am not an all-star skater, all right? The only thing I could think about is what we do have here in our city, and, and as that, you know, strong diversity. So I, I, I would like to see a policy become more manifested in, in terms of more basketball courts and, and pickleball and just, you know, the, the, the all-around. But for the most part, I, I do recommend that, you know, we, if we can get a policy to that, that, that would be great. But I don't have a, I don't have any questions. I just had a comment that I just wanted to add to, and I appreciate staff for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any go-bags? Just a quick follow-on comment for me. First of all, again, thank you all for the, for the great work, and extend my appreciation to everybody who worked on the solicitation bid proposal, the winnowing down of the, of the vendors to the select few, and then the ultimate selection. So good job on that. We look forward to a fantastic finished product here. I do know that, I want to speak just specifically about the staff that works at our current facility, and of course, will have the joy of, of new equipment and new facilities not too far distant, but they have done a fantastic job over the years. It has just been remarkable. I think I've told this story before, when I was still a working man, I had a colleague of mine came into the office and said, "Hey, I was out your way the other day." I said, "What were you doing out there?" And he says, "Well, we were skating, and you guys got a great sheet of ice there." And, you know, that's pretty remarkable. He lives in Alexandria, and he was coming over to, to skate. There were, you know, hockey team coming over to play against our team here. And then I, subsequent to that, I had another colleague, turns out he was my boss at the time, and he says, "Hey, I was out your way." And I said, "Really? What were you doing there?" He says, "We were playing your hockey team." And they, they commented on the quality of the, of the ice there. It is tremendous work. Wherever they go, they, they say they, you know, they get grouses or complaints, you know, as, you know, people can tell the difference that I couldn't even imagine what the subtleties are. But nonetheless, there you are, very, very much a appreciated work there, so. Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So I, I'd be, well, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask this question. We still have a property on Church Road, and it's, we as a councilor at some point need to have a conversation about what our next steps are going to be with that property. So I just wanted to make a comment in regard to that. Thank you very much.
Certainly. So once again, kudos to the staff. You're widely recognized for doing exemplary work, and it reflects well in the city, and you serve our constituents well. So kudos to everybody. Look forward to getting this done. With that in mind, I will look for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll be more than happy to move that we approve or adopt Resolution R 2025, awarding a contract for construction services for the new ice arena.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor Protem.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, please reply with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is new business. And this is in regard to detailed site plan DSP 23026, Orsman of Bowie. Looks like we'll be seeing from, hearing from our friend, Mr. Antonelli, excuse me, Antonetti, this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of council. Redwan Koker here, the city's transit station planner, here to introduce this item. This is detailed site plan DSP dash 23026 for a new one-story automobile vehicle sales and service dealership that's approximately 22,111 square feet, using the provisions of the prior zoning ordinance. The property is currently forested and undeveloped. We do have a PowerPoint to show you all today that Mr. Robert Antonetti from Shipley and Horn, representing the applicant, will be presenting shortly. The Bowie Advisory Planning Board met on April 22nd to hear this case, to which they unanimously moved to approve this detailed site plan in accordance with staff recommendations. The county planning board date has yet to be determined, as the applicant is updating their natural resource inventory. The criteria for approval of a detailed site plan is simply that the planning board may approve the site plan if it finds the plan represents a reasonable alternative to satisfy the county site design guidelines. Staff recommends approval of the detailed site plan DSP dash 23026 following conditions which are, which are to update the site plan to include both master plan, bicycle pedestrian facilities along Crane Highway, eight-feet wide sidewalk, and bike lanes unless modified by SHA, which, with written correspondence, and to update the site plan to demonstrate the location and count of bicycle parking provided. The bicycle parking provided should be consistent with the guidance from the 2012 Ashdod God for the Development of Bicycle Facilities. With that concludes staff presentation. Mr. Robert Antonetti is here, representing the applicant, and he will be giving the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Antonetti. Welcome and good to see you again.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council for the record. Robert Antonetti with the law firm of Shipley and Horn. To my left, Mr. John Ferante, our senior land planner of Shipley and Horn. And we're both pleased to represent the Orsman Automotive Group, doing business as Rohit Bowie LLC, which is the legal property owner of this particular site. Tonight with us, for our team, we have Mr. Dave McFadden, representative of the applicant. We also are pleased to have Ms. Kat Doer and Hannah Haught, Manman Heisler and Sacks, the architects for the project. We're also joined by Mr. Chris Rizzi with Bowler Engineering. And we also have Mr. Dylan McAndrew for Lenhart Traffic Consulting with us as well. And finally, last but not least, we have Ms. Jackie Brown from GS Procter. Very pleased to have our whole team here. We'll be here to answer any questions that you have after my brief remarks. I would like to thank Mr. Koker for his presentation, and he's been a pleasure to work with during the review of this application. So I would like to thank him for all his efforts. The project, as you heard, is for a detailed site plan approval for approximately 22,111 square-foot vehicle sales and service dealership. As you know, Orsman does have a presence here along US 301. This is a project that has a long development history. It was approved for a preliminary plan of subdivision back in 2004 for up to 29,800 square feet, which is about 7,000 square foot more than what we're actually proposing. A detailed site plan was approved in 2005, again, for a 29,000-plus square-foot facility. This is a smaller facility. The property has, is subject to a record plat of subdivision, so it has gone through a formal subdivision application, and it is platted. This project is proceeding under the prior zoning ordinance that was in place prior to April 1st, 2022. This project offers, well, if we, I think the slideshow, if we could advance it. There we go. Thank you. So here's some economic benefits, which we believe are of interest and germane to this project. We do feel that the one-year sales estimate for this dealership will be approximately $39 million. Will create approximately 38 new jobs. The facility itself will be about 7.8 million plus site work. And the estimated property tax alone is about $125,000 a year. So we're pleased to be able to grow jobs and the commercial tax base in the city of Bowie as part of this, part of this development of this project. What we have here is just kind of an overview and context of where the site is. It's, it's outlined in the white dotted line in the upper-left corner here. Again, this site has been designated for some time in a commercial zone. It does have a preliminary plan of subdivision and a previous detailed site plan, which this detailed site plan will replace in its entirety for the facility, shown in these slides. If we can go to the next slide, please. Here's the prior detailed site plan. Forgive me, that plan was oriented a bit where US 301 is on the bottom of this image along, along the sides. If we can go to the next slide, please. Sorry. So this, this is the current facility. US 301 is planned right, north-south in this orientation. But it is essentially the same limits of disturbance as shown in the prior detailed site plan, albeit for a smaller facility. If we can go to the next slide here. This, this site plan here shows the, basically the area of, I, I think this is supposed to be colored, but it, but it isn't. What is outside of the solid lines where the parking in the facility is? That is green area. That is woodlands, sensitive environmental features that will be retained as part of this development. So this project will, this property will have a significant amount of woodland buffer that will remain on it, will not be disturbed by this development. If we can go to the next slide, please. Here's a floor plan of what is being proposed. You know, a traditional dealership in many respects. It'll have a showroom with vehicles in the front. It'll have service bays in the rear, as well as parts in a vehicle delivery showroom and service lane drop-off. What is here, this facility and this is representative and in line with the state law changes regarding EV vehicles and the mandate, you're probably all familiar with or have heard of. By 2035, in the state of Maryland, all new, new vehicle, passenger vehicle and light truck sales are supposed to be 100% EV vehicles. And this facility is going to have a variety of green elements, building elements. Among them are EV chargers as part of this to service the fleet. There'll be level three chargers, level two chargers, and level one chargers to serve the showroom, the, the vehicle service area, and, and the outdoor area for customers. If we go to the next slide, please. Here are some elevations. It's an attractive building with, with stone and metal seam and glass on really all sides. You'll see the roll-up doors here, part of the, part of the green building techniques here. These will be high-speed roll-up doors. They'll help keep conditioned air inside the building by, by being a roll-up and close to seal off the area that is being conditioned in a quick fashion. If we go to the next slide, please. Again, very similar architecture on all four sides. It'll be attractive on all four sides. And we go to the next slide, please. Again, here is a kind of a conceptual rendering of what it'll look like from, from US 301. So with that, we're very pleased to bring this detailed site plan back to the city. We are very excited about the opportunity to develop and expand the commercial tax base in the city. One question you may have is what manufacturer will go here? Well, that is a challenging question to answer right now. The automotive industry is in a bit of a transition, given some of the national, international trends that are going on in terms of tariffs and where a vehicle is made and such. So we're not 100% sure. We are in conversations with several manufacturers. Nothing has been finalized yet. But what this applicant is certain, that somebody will go here, and this is a very desirable location to be. And we want to make sure we can get through the entitlement process as efficiently as possible and be ready to receive that manufacturer once a final determination is made. So, so I did want to put that, that out there, that we are, we're working towards the goal of having that manufacturer in hand. And we look forward to announcing that at the appropriate time, once, you know, final details have been determined. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks in the meantime. I know you have a long agenda today. I do appreciate your consideration, favorable consideration of this application. We are in agreement with the staff's recommendations and their recommended conditions. And we appreciate the BAPB's analysis and time with us a couple of weeks ago. So with that, our team is here to answer any questions that you may have, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Antonetti. I'll look to my colleagues for any comments or questions. Councilman Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I think the, the one serious concern I have, and I know you guys know about this, is that section of 301 going north and south, beginning at Pointer Ridge Drive, going all the way up past Excalibur to 197 is always backed up. So I do use, I bought a car from Orsman some years ago, and I go right across the street to the, where, from where you're at, I'm across the street getting my car serviced. It is always a challenge, unless that light stops people. It's a challenge to get out and maneuver into traffic. So just kind of curious as to what, you know, you're looking to do. I see the bike lanes and stuff. I'd be very concerned about people out there riding bikes in that level of traffic on 301. But I, I see that's part of the master plan for the county. But can you talk about the, getting into the dealership and then getting out both on north and south lanes?
Yes, yes, council member. With regards to the entitlement history, I mentioned that there's a preliminary plan of subdivision, which analyzed transportation and traffic movement. And as part of that, there were conditions that were imposed on this property in order for this development to go forward. Among them, we are to work with SHA regarding the acceleration and deceleration lanes at the main entrance. We are also, among the conditions, were to do a signal warrant analysis to see whether the, this, this site is pretty much strategically located at the crossover, if you're, you're familiar with getting your vehicle serviced there. So we are interacting with SHA right now in terms of a signal warrant analysis. We believe that a signal is warranted on the southbound lane, but not the northbound lane. So really where the other dealerships are. And with SHA's concurrence, we are, we would be willing to put in a signal at the southbound, on the southbound lanes. And as part of that, if SHA concurs with that, we would consolidate the entrances for the Jeep dealership and for, for this dealership, shift them, have them at one point, hopefully lined up with the crossover to have a safe stopping point for vehicles heading southbound on US 301 and allow people to come in and out from, from that point. So, so those are ongoing discussions. We are subject to the operating agency's final determination on it. But we are very much interested in making our findings on that signal be known to them and hopefully have them support the ultimate signalization at that main entrance.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rogers. Anybody else? Councilman Truesdale, yes, no?
No.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Brady?
Good to see you again. Thank you for coming. Just a couple of quick questions. You said you had high, they had high-speed doors, roll-up doors, due to energy efficiency and what have you, correct?
Yes.
I'm taking it that they are fairly proven? Because I could imagine that if they come down fast, somebody might be hurt if they're not.
As an attorney, we don't want any liability in that, in that regard, certainly. I can only speak anecdotally from my interaction with dealerships and driving in. You pull up, it senses, it rolls up. You can pull right in or, or a mechanic can pull it in. And they do, they do close. They also have sensors to sense when anybody's in the path of it, so it will not close on somebody. Mr. McFadden, is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, yes, sir. Hi, David McFadden, with Orsman. I'm an overhead door expert. But, but we do operate 18 car dealerships.
And?
And as we've remodeled or built grounds up, we, we have chosen to go with the high-speed doors, simply because we, we provide conditioned space for our technicians.
Right.
All of our shops are air-conditioned, and it obviously makes sense to, to save as much of that conditioned air as possible. So the speed doors are, are there. They've got photo set, photo eyes, both on, on the top, outside and inside of the overhead door, along with in the, in the actual crossing through the, the door opening.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's reliable and it's safe.
Being an engineer, I'm always looking at Murphy's Law. And being in the nuclear industry, we have sometimes triple and quadruple redundancy. So I'm hoping that your sensors are more than just a single sensor, but rather redundant ones, so.
Yeah.
But you seem to have a lot of experience in proving.
Yes, and like I said, we have 18 dealerships, all have the overhead doors. And, you know, if we were in the 1990s or 1980s having this conversation, I'd be, you know, I wouldn't be able to say what I'm saying now, so.
Okay, thank you.
The technology's so much better. The doors are lighter weight. They zip up, they zip down. And, yeah, we really don't have any problems with it.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for that answer, so.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Your, this site, the development site is 3.8 acres of the 6.29 acres of the site, correct?
I believe it's correct, yes.
And most of that is in the 100-year floodplain? Or a good portion of it's in the?
A, a good portion of it. I can't give an exact percentage, but a good portion of it is.
Okay. And that is predominantly a very good space between the backside of the site, the developed site, and the neighbors?
Yes.
So that they have a, a more than 50-feet buffer between their rear yards and the back of the dealership?
Not, not only is it a distance separation, it's also heavily wooded. So it's, it's a, it's a good screened buffer to boot, so yes.
Okay, good. Somewhere, I couldn't find it, somewhere there's a reference to drop-off. It's talking about drop-off of supplies and what have you. Does that include cars? Because I think there's a reference, it'd be on the backside of the facility, you'd have the drop-off spot. Is that for the deliveries of cars?
It does include car carriers. So this has been, this, this site has been designed with truck turning movements that will allow for car carriers to enter the site and to have vehicles disembark from the truck on the site, as opposed to being on US 301 or in the, in the median. So we were very cognizant of that for safety reasons.
And, and in the past, when I was on the council, we, I reviewed some of those other dealerships. And I don't know if it was Honda or which one it was, but I put the limitation that you couldn't, they couldn't unload cars on the shoulder, because that's dangerous. It's dangerous for the drivers, driving their car, passing it. It's dangerous for the truck driver getting in and out of his truck. I don't think any of the dealership should use the shoulder of 301 for loading, unloading vehicles. So I'm glad to see that you're providing that behind it, away from the 301 traffic. So you're to be commended for that. And that, that does it for my questions. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Brady. I will, seeing no other questions or, or comments, just a couple of things from me, if I may. Apologize, had you, had you stepped in a way, you thought you're, you're all clear. The?
I've always enjoyed my time here, so.
Exactly. Well, it's hard to say that you would ever want to leave. It's a great place to, to hang around and chat all evening. First of all, I do find it ironic, the, the need for, for the shortage of bicycle requirements, that you fail to meet that when you're doing a car dealership. But that's, I think it's kind of amusing that we're, we're focused on that. Nonetheless, I understand the, the county requirements. Light pollution, I'm, first of all, I guess, stop back and say, I'm glad to see that we got plenty of tree buffers. And I know we've had some light pollution issues with some of the properties further south. And it looks to me like we won't have that based on the design layout, the way it's going. So thanks for attending to that. The adequacy of, of parking and storage, notwithstanding the fact that you're not announcing or you do not yet have closure on which brand it might be that's locating there. We've had issues in the past with people storing vehicles and, and odd sorts of places. And it really looked a little trashy. And we've resolved that problem with other dealerships. I'm not casting aspersions on, on, on what this is going to look like. How do we, how did you come up with your parking requirements? And is, are we sure we have enough parking for inventory for, for your, for your future business?
So this has been designed according to the parking schedule for the county zoning ordinance. So it does meet the requirements, the minimum requirements for parking per the county zoning ordinance. We have the benefit of, of controlling several dealerships along this side of US 301. So we can utilize space between all of them and leverage, if there's a surplus or deficit in, in storage for one space or the other, we can move inventory from one to the other. There's also some additional commercial properties that have been purchased by, by the applicant or by entities controlled by the applicant, which we are investigating the possibility of utilizing them as, as storage, just, just passive storage in the future, located adjacent to these properties, again, all zoned commercial. But that would be part of future development efforts, but we feel that we can accommodate that. We also control the median properties across the way, where that crossover is, which also can be utilized. And if worse comes to worse, and I say this is worse because you're, you're successful if you have a lot of inventory that we could secure off-site storage as well, which happens at times and times for dealerships that if, you know, a client is coming, you can go get that vehicle brought on and waiting for the person right up front if that situation arises. It's not absolutely ideal, but we're approaching this as if we have adequate facilities currently. And, but we're, we're open to that if, if come be, if that, if that needs to happen in the future.
Excellent, thank you. Mentioned earlier, you don't yet have a name on the brand or are not positioned to disclose. But I trust it's new, not relocated?
It's new.
Yeah, okay. I'd hate the thought that we're talking about increasing revenues and, and taxes, only, only to be taking it away from, from another location in my, in my inventory of, of retail properties. Good to know that. EV charging, obviously is going to be there. Will there be public access to that EV charging? Excellent. I don't necessarily expect it to be free, I think, but I do appreciate the, the comment on that.
I can just comment on that. So free's always the best, right? Everybody likes free. So we will have several customer. So we will have several customer-facing level-three chargers in the, in the customer parking areas that will be open and free, no charge. We have level-three chargers at most of our dealerships currently, and most of the alerts I get from our security company is somebody's there at 2:00 in the morning charging the car. You know, they do have the ability to charge customers. Orsman, however, has decided not to do that. Our chargers are open to the public. If you buy your vehicle from us, you're free to use it as well.
Outstanding. As an EV driver, I may have been on one of those.
Okay, well, yeah.
I have to think, it may not have been 2:00 in the morning.
You're a Tesla?
I don't know, I might, I have a Nissan Leaf and.
Oh, okay, all right. We'll, we'll charge your vehicle for you.
Early adopter, early adopter, and low mileage, but I'll be upgrading at some point.
Absolutely.
Yes, I love free. Free is, free is a good word.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. I do greatly appreciate.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All righty. Any further questions, go-bags, re-dos, comments? All right, so I appreciate the input here. Anything more from staff?
No, Mayor Pro Tem.
All right, very good. With that in mind, I'm looking for a motion on the subject.
Going to arm wrestle her for it. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to move that approval of detailed site plan DSP 23026, Orsman of Bowie, that we approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We will look for a vote. Any comments or questions on the motion? All right, with that in mind, all those in favor, please reply with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you all for being here this evening, very much appreciate your time, and look forward to your successful business here in Bowie.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All righty. With that in mind, we are at everybody's favorite part of the meeting. I am looking, yeah, well, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to move to adjourn to closed session under the statutory authority of the Maryland Annotated Code, general provision, Article 3-305B3, to consider the acquisition of real property for public purpose in matters directly related thereto. Section 3-305B7, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. And Section 3-305B14, before a contract is awarded or bids are opened, to discuss the matter directly related to negotiation strategy or the contents of bid proposal, if public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you all for participating here and at home.